Good evening. Before we start, the City Council just met on one closed session item and there is nothing to report out at this time. This is a teleconference meeting. Thank you for those who are viewing the March 16th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two, three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. And if I believe we're taking the online public comments first, so we'll go through those and then we'll do the in-person ones. So that's just a reminder for those of you that are commenting online, be sure to raise your hand because once we've gone through all of the public comment online, we're switching to in-person and we won't be going back and forth. So be sure you raise your hand. Okay, so that takes us to our ceremonial matters. We have, the council member Matthews is going to read a proclamation in recognition of Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, March 29th, 2022.
Okay. Whereas the United States Armed Forces assisted the South Vietnamese, I'm sorry, my eyes are really bad today, government to combat tyranny during the Vietnam War from 1961, when US Armed Forces arrived in Southeast Asia through March 29th, 1973, when our combat troops withdrew from Vietnam until the capture of Saigon by the North Vietnamese Army in 1975. And whereas, at the peak of the United States' involvement in the war in 1969, approximately 543,000 American troops were serving in Vietnam. And whereas, more than 58,000 United States troops lost their lives in Vietnam and more than 300,000 US Armed Forces members were wounded. Three to four million Vietnamese, as well as 1.5 to 2 million Latian and Cambodians, also died in the effort to combat communist influence. And whereas, the Vietnam War was an extremely divisive issue among the people of the United States. Upon their return home, members of the United States Armed Forces, who bravely served to help protect the rights of the South Vietnamese citizens against tyranny, were caught in crossfire of public debate about our country's involvement in the war. And whereas, it was not until 1982, almost a decade after the war's end, that a memorial in our nation's capital was dedicated to those members of the United States Armed Forces who lost their lives or were declared missing in action during the Vietnam War. And whereas, on March 28th, 2017, President Donald J. Trump signed the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 to officially recognize March 29th as National Vietnam War Veterans Day, also known as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. This act encourages all community members to observe this day by learning about the sacrifices Vietnam veterans made to protect human rights and about the importance of helping Vietnam-era veterans reintegrate into civilian life. Now therefore be a complaint that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes March 29th to be Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Arcata. The Council honors Vietnam War veterans for their extreme sacrifice both in Southeast Asia and at home, and expresses profound gratitude for their faithful service to our country, dated March 16th, 2022.
And I believe we have Sarah J. Hart, who is here, accepting on behalf of her father, Sergeant James Thomas Hart Jr. of the United States Marine Corps.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My father died last February 11th, February 11th, 2020, sorry, two years ago now, and is not able to receive this. I am proud to receive it in his stead. But in this moment, I would like to say that the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day is something of a reconciliation, it's worth noting, and lest we leave future generations to reconcile current circumstances, it's worth, you know, thinking about practicing what we proclaim. And in that spirit, I just want to thank a few folks, the Arcata High School National Honor Society, whose students have come and volunteered at the Arcata Veterans Hall since August, cleaning, painting, helping to serve at our brunches, which happen every month. I'd also like to thank the Cal Poly Humboldt students, who have similarly volunteered at the hall since, for about five years now. And all of the folks who come to help maintain a community connection with our veterans, supporting and serving them, yes, but also remembering that these folks are an integral part of our community and recognizing that what they do today continues to be service and remembering that is crucial to, like I said, not handing the similar situation to future generations. It's worth remembering there are 19 million veterans currently in America alive and 4.5 million of those have served since 9/11. Forty percent of those live with a certified service-connected disability. And this is not a community apart, this is a community shared with us. And so I would like to invite everyone to come and join us at the hall for, you know, monthly brunches and other activities. There's innumerable opportunities for service. And also to just close with, my father was, you know, a wonderful human and an excellent father, but aside from that, was really at home in this community. And Arcata provided for him, he never lived anywhere as long as he lived here. He came here to find peace and stayed for 22 years. And this community really honored and respected him as exactly who he was and provided him with a home. And so, you know, a little bit late maybe, we are welcoming him home and I thank you all for that.
And just, you are all more than welcome to stay and enjoy the meeting, but we also equally won't be offended if you have other things you'd like to do. So I, all right, thank you. Okay, so this is our, now our audience has gone, but that's okay. Our time for early oral communications. So this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes. So if you're speaking in person, feel free to make your way to the podium. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand or press *9 if you're calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. So do we have anybody that's called in?
We do. Our first speaker is Pat. Go ahead, Pat.
Hi, my name is Pat Carr and I live here in Arcata. And I just want to speak generally in support of the Gateway Plan that I know the city and the Community Development Department are working on. I like this project, what I know of it, based mainly on the fact that I think it will be a more dense development, densely built in, which I think is really helpful in a number of areas. First off, affordability, clearly, you know, one of the main issues that we have in Humboldt's housing crisis is that our housing prices are just so high now. And with a higher density development, it potentially means that housing prices will be considerably lower for folks. And we're going to need a lot more housing here in Arcata with Cal Poly Humboldt building up and potentially some significant industrial developments. I think everybody's aware of that. The other thing I like is the accessibility, the fact that this is a development that's right in town, right in Arcata. And I kind of contrast that with another development that's being proposed and probably will be enacted or passed by the Board of Supervisors next week, which is the North McKay Development, which people may be familiar with, it's actually in the county outside of Eureka. So it's a little bit of a distance, driving-wise, for people who live there to get to work. It's also a little bit more of a sprawl development. And what that means is that people are going to be driving, which emits greenhouse gases as we know. And because North McKay is pretty far from bus stops, you look at that compared to the Gateway Plan, which looks at housing much more right in town.
Pat, I'm so sorry, but this has been your two minutes, but thank you very much for that public input.
Thank you.
Okay, checking for any other online public comment. Go ahead and raise your hand now. All right, there's no more online early communications.
Hi, I have a few props here. Maybe it'll stay. I'll do this, okay. The earth is with me always, on my mind. I had a wonderful day. My name is Joanne McGary. I sometimes go by McGreta, channeling this very inspiring young person who wrote this book, No One Is Too Small to Make a Difference. So even though I'm taller than she, I'm trying to make a difference. Today, I walked a friend's dog throughout our town on this beautiful sunny day and was reminded of all the remarkable aspects of our community, from the redwood forest to the coastal dunes, to my neighborhood, which is the Creamery District, which is apparently part of now what people are calling the Gateway District. I just would like to say once again that we are in a crisis globally. That means we're in a crisis here in Humboldt County. And I would again like us to all urgently take action to thwart the threat of global warming and climate change in our community, declaring a climate emergency once again, like we did three years ago. And I want to be able to use my rain hat that I spent a lot of money on. Climate change is proving to be very, very difficult for me to find an opportunity to walk in the rain. So it's real, folks, and we need to acknowledge it out loud and we need to roll up our sleeves and do something so we can start by declaring an emergency, putting this earth flag at the top of our flagpoles and making a difference in our world. So thank you very much.
Okay, so that ends the early public communications and it brings us to the consent calendar. If you want to speak, you can. Oh, so yeah, just come up to the podium.
Is this your channel?
It is, yeah. So this is for anything that's not on the agenda. And you've got, and you'll have two minutes.
My name's Mike Toglia. I've been a citizen here for the past 10 years or so. And I spoke before this City Council a few years ago about the Arcata Police Department, specifically about Sergeant Brian Hoffman, in an incident where I was threatened by somebody in our community with a weapon. And I wanted to file a police report about it. And Sergeant Brian Hoffman pushed me out of the police department, into the parking lot, and threatened me with arrest if I didn't leave, and refused to allow me to file a police report when I was threatened with a weapon in this community. He doesn't deny that. He acknowledged it just the other day when I spoke to him. That's criminal activity, that's not law enforcement. I want you to know that that has happened to me, not just that time, but several times. I was threatened by a Safeway employee in the parking lot of Safeway, a person who was off the job, but is a current employee, who was intoxicated on hard liquor, and I know that because the guy got right up in my face, threatening me, harassing me, using profane language, and provoking a physical confrontation, brandishing a weapon, reaching into his pocket and brandishing an object in his hand that looked to me, this was after nine, around between 9:15 and 9:30 PM, brandishing an object in his hand in a threatening manner. And I called 911 and reported it.
So, sir, I'm.
You're not allowed to file a police report about that.
I'm sorry, but this is the end of your two minutes. But if you do want to continue your story, we will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for another open session. So if you'd like to hang around and continue it, then you're welcome to do that.
How long have you left?
I don't know, it looks like a short meeting tonight, so hopefully not too long. I wish I could tell you, but I don't know. So you're welcome to hang out though, if you'd like. But thank you for, thank you for sharing that with us, it's important.
I want to say one thing. And George Wood.
I just had a real quick question. Didn't we declare a climate emergency?
We did, we did a resolution, I'd have to pull it. Joanne could probably tell me, but I'm thinking it was just before the, like, 2019, just before the pandemic.
Did it expire?
No, we did it by resolution.
Okay.
And it does not expire.
Okay, so that takes us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that an item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have Item A, biweekly report on general warrants. B, reappoint Danny Hagens to the Forest Management Committee for three-year term ending March 31st, 2025, and reappoint Wes Smith and Jeremy Sfella to the Wetlands and Creeks Committees for three-year terms ending March 31st, 2025. C, adopt Resolution Number 212-51, authorizing submission of an application for and receipt of an equitable community revitalization grant for Little Lake Industries' site cleanup. D, award a three-year professional services agreement for business loan program and microenterprise program portfolio management to AEDC, Small Business Lending Center, AEDC, not to exceed $25,000 annually, and authorize staff to work with AEDC to finalize the agreement. E, award a contract in the amount of $59,846 to CSW/Stuber Stroick Engineering Group, Incorporated, to provide preliminary engineering, public engagement, and environmental analysis for the 8th and 9th Streets Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. F, amend the construction contract for the Boyd Road Sewer Improvements Project 2021 with GR Sundberg, Inc. in the amount of $36,000. Extend the contract term through 6/30/2022 and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G, adopt Resolution Number 212-45, authorizing a grant application to the California State Library for the Arcata Library Accessibility Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. H, adopt Resolution Number 212-53, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the class and pay resolution for the International Union of Operating Engineers Number Three, to reflect the water, wastewater operator and training, Operator One and Operator Two position changes. And I, adopt Resolution Number 212-51, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Arcata, authorizing joint application to and participation in the Home Key Program, and rescinding Resolution Number 212-37, and adopt Resolution Number 212-52, amending Resolution Number 212-38. And I'm sure everybody can, will pass a quiz on this, right? Boy. Okay, so do we have, is there any council members that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item E, please.
Okay, Item E?
I'd like to pull everything except for Item B.
Okay, so everything but B?
Yes.
It does. Is there anyone from the public or staff that would like us to pull Item B? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start, we'll just go down the list and start with Item A.
I just had a couple of questions.
Can I make a motion to pass Item B first?
Oh, sure, sorry. Let's go ahead and, go ahead if you want to do that.
For sake, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Item B from the consent calendar. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks. On packet page nine, there's a $1,300 check written to Zero Waste Humboldt, I was curious what that was.
I just have the description for the warrant report. The title is Food Rescue Capacity Assessment Contract for the $1,300 check.
And then just like right below that, there's an item that says business card, and it's $3,228.64. And I was just wondering if we, do we actually spend that much money on business cards?
Can you provide me with the check number? I'm looking at an Excel document.
The ACH or the?
The. And the dollar amount is 1309.77?
Hmm, it's 3,228.64.
Do not see that item.
Do you want me to read the GL account number again?
The check number is preferred. Is there a check number associated with that?
ACH.
So it's just ACH in that column?
ACH and then it says B U S I N 005.
What page are you on?
Nine.
It's just the. Yeah. It's just going to be a credit card.
Oh, it's for the general?
So it's not, okay, so maybe, maybe it's not like paper business cards you hand out, maybe it's a business credit card?
So it should be, so that is related to our Bank of America travel card and the expenses are related to our post-reimbursement for our police officers.
Okay, thank you. And then I just noticed on package page 10 and 11, there were just a lot of different REMIF charges.
Yep.
And why they were all separate from different accounts.
Okay, so I'm just going to filter to see what the REMIF charges are related to. Yeah. Yes, so that is just related to our monthly insurance payment, so it's medical premiums for dental, vision, and health premiums. So we have different breakouts as we spread those expenses citywide for those payments.
And then what are the negative numbers?
So typically, we have changes that happen if employees elect, say they add a dependent, remove a dependent, they have other coverage where they come off the insurance plan. We typically will have credits that offset, as the city, you know, shouldn't be responsible for paying those expenses if those employees no longer elect that coverage.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those are all my questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Item A from the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Public comment.
Oh, was there any, I'm sorry, was there any public comment on Item A?
I see no public comment online.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're off to Item C.
So I would just like to update the resolution number on Item C to 212-56. So whoever makes the final motion on that, if that could be updated to 212-56.
Was there an old 5-1?
There is a 5-1 in Item I.
Yeah, I was just hoping I could get a better idea of what the Equity Community Revitalization Grant was and what kind of cleanup it was for.
Yeah, so it's, it's for cleanup or assessment, depending on what's needed by jurisdiction. I believe nonprofits can also apply for it. The Center for Creative Land Recycling actually recommended, they were helping us with our EPA application, making it more competitive, but since the EPA cleanup grants are very, very competitive, they recommended that we also apply for this funding source, which can be used for the cleanup that's necessary at Little Lakes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's all my questions.
Okay, is there anyone that has public comment on this?
I can see none online.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item C.
With the resolution change.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 212-56?
Yeah.
With a change, update the resolution number to 212-56.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Item D.
Is this the one? Let me see. Okay. Yeah, this one was confusing to me, so we're, doesn't AEDC give out loans? Isn't that their business?
Yeah, so AEDC has been hired in the last three-year period to service our business loan program. And the Community Development Block Grant, which funds the majority of our business loans, requires that we redo procurement for that loan servicing contract every three years. And so we are going through that process now. And so AEDC was actually the only responsive bidder that we received, and we went through the process to ensure that we could approve them without that additional layer of competition.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess I was confused, just totally my fault. I was thinking that it was us loaning them 25,000, but that's not it.
Yeah, no, they're, we're paying them to service our existing business loans and then to underwrite future business loans as we bring them to us, bring them to them, excuse me.
And then it says for loans up to 200,000, AEDC will be paid a total of 7%. So we loan out money?
We do.
And then they get 7%?
We, we have a business loan program, we have local program income in our Community Development Block Grant program, and then occasionally we have grants that we can draw business loans from. And then AEDC gets paid to underwrite and service. business loans from, and then AEDC gets paid to underwrite and service those loans. And so that, this contract establishes the, um, the criteria or the, the amounts that they would get paid to do that servicing for us.
So they're, they would get 7% in addition to what we already pay them?
They would get 7% to write a loan, and then there's an amount that they get paid to, uh, to service those loans.
Okay. It says, "In the event the proposed City of Arcata business loan approved by the city is denied or withdrawn by the borrower, City of Arcata staff or CDVG representatives, AEDC will be paid time and material for underwriting services rendered." Um, so is that because they wouldn't be making money if the loan had gone through?
Yeah, exactly. So if a loan goes through of up to $200,000, they get 7% of the loan as their underwriting cost. If, for some reason that's outside their control, they've invested work into the loan, but the loan doesn't close, they wouldn't otherwise get paid, and so they get an hourly rate for time and materials to ensure that their work is paid for.
Um, and then, yeah, it says award a three-year professional services agreement, but I don't see an agreement here. I just see a cost proposal.
Um, these are the, uh, the terms of the cost proposal or the terms that the agreement would be based on, it's our standard professional services agreement.
Okay, um, is there a difference between the agreement and a cost proposal?
A difference between which?
The, an agreement and a cost proposal?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so is this just not labeled correctly as cost proposal?
This is out of their cost proposal to share with us what they would charge us for the various, uh, underwriting standards. The full scope of work is, uh, included in the RFP that was circulated, that they would agree to do that full scope of work, um, and then ultimately that will be embedded in our standard professional services agreement.
So this is, it's both in one, a cost proposal and the agreement terms?
Um, this will be incorporated into the agreement terms, but there are additional agreement terms such as require, you know, we require insurance, we require certain criteria around how they bill us, um, so kind of the standard service agreement, and then these will be part of, these will be incorporated into that agreement.
Have we not made the agreement yet? I'm just wondering, I was just wondering why it wasn't in the packet.
This has just been the standard format that we brought these to you in when we use our standard agreement.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I'm just confused. I thought David said that this is the cost proposal, and then I, I said, is this, is this, is this both? Is this a cost proposal with the agreement terms in it? And you said no.
It's not an agreement, it's the cost proposal. It'll get embedded into the agreement as part of the scope of work. The standard services agreement is the agreement that will be signed, and then that will be the agreement. This is, this is what we're asking them to agree to do, the cost proposal for the services of work.
Okay, to me, that sounds like that the, the terms of the agreement are in the cost proposal. I feel like that's what you just said.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, that's all my, well, let me see. Yeah, that's all my questions for this item, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item D.
Second.
Okay, so before we vote, we'll just ask for public comment.
Seeing none online.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you. Um, on to item E.
Um, so this was the only proposal that we were given?
Yes.
By the way, G Street looks really good. Thank you very much. Um, and do we consider doing another RFP? Isn't that kind of standard sometimes, if we just get one?
We just did once, and the proposal that we received, it met our requirement, what we needed to do, and we did, um, call other, uh, local engineers who would potentially be submitting an RFP for this project, but they were so busy that they were not able to submit the RFP, so we just got one. So even if we do one more RFP, we will not be getting more, so hence we decided just to go with this one.
And then, was there, like, any negotiation at all on the pricing, or did we just take the number they gave us and accept it?
Um, there was no negotiations on this. We got the cost proposal from them for the scope of work that we have outlined in our But again, it's a time and material, so they have submitted the cost proposal for, that's an estimate they have given us. We will be tracking that on time and material, not to exceed that.
But it's whatever they report to you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, but, so it's a contract for $59,846, but you're gonna track the time and materials and only pay that much?
Yes, in the sense like, once we award the, this contract to the, um, engineers, once they start the work, they will submit us monthly invoices for the amount of work they are doing, and we'll be tracking that.
Okay, so you basically just keep them honest?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, it just seemed like, it seemed like a high number to me, I guess that was my first thought, um, for what they're offering here. Um, and then... Task A Outreach on pa, packet page 25, um, the second to last sentence, it says, "To help refine this process, we propose organizing two groups, focus groups, to hold walking tours and coordination meetings to focus our planning effort." And I didn't understand that sentence.
Can you repeat that again? Sorry.
"To help refine this process, we propose organizing two groups, focus groups, to hold walking tours and coordinate, coordination meetings to focus our planning effort."
So what they're saying is they will be having two, two groups that will be helping with outreach, and one of that group will be a technical group, which will include city staff, police department, and I believe they mentioned fire department, and then the other working group would be the local business owners, so that'll be the two separate groups, and they will be working hand in hand to do the outreach for the project.
Okay, so maybe it's just supposed to say two focus groups?
Yeah.
And they accidentally put an extra word in there.
So this was a project that came at the behest of the Plaza Improvement Task Force, am I correct? That's why I wanted to pull it off, because I appreciate this, I think it's a wonderful project, and I'm really excited to hear more about it, and I love that we're taking the time to do our due diligence and do a great amount of public outreach on it, because I know that it might be a little controversial, but at the end of the day, I really appreciate it, and thanks the Plaza Improvement Task Force for bringing this forward, and thank you.
And then my next question is under social media, uh, it says, "We will initiate the outreach program with a catchy tagline, 'Walk, Bike, Arcata Main.'"
Hashtag.
Hashtag, yeah. Does anybody feel like that's a catchy tagline? I feel like we could do better. Walk, Bike, Arcata Main, that's like not even, yeah, it's not a sentence. So, that was just some feedback, I guess, um, if we could come up maybe with a different tagline, unless people disagree with me?
Yeah, we can work with the consultant, if this is not preferable, we can, we'll have different options.
I didn't think it was that great of a tagline either when I read it, so honestly, I was, I was kind of, I was like, "Main what? We don't have a main street." I guess I was like, "Arcata Main Street?" I don't know, but, yeah, it is kind of clunky. We can be part of the technical working group and let them know that, I don't know.
We'll get our influencers on it.
Um, under number five pop-ups on packet page 26, uh, it says, "We'll solicit input at and direct public to website and public meeting." Are they directing them to the city website, or are they gonna have their own website for this?
It will be a city website, city project website.
Okay.
It will be a city project website.
And then...
Can I ask a question while you're looking through that? I did, I did have a question just kind of about the public outreach and engagement, just because that has been a large piece of a lot of the planning that we've been talking about, um, and so, kind of what I got from the proposal, I mean, will this, this group, CSW, be doing most of the engagement, or will they be working pretty closely with city staff, or has that not been 100% determined yet, or will, you know, just them facilitating it, and do we have any idea yet of what that would look like?
It will be a teamwork between the city staff and the consultant, working together hand in hand with the working group and the Transportation Safety Committee.
Is there a timeline for this?
Yes, yes, there is timeline. Our goal for this phase to be finished is by the end of this year, this phase.
Um, on packet page 28, it says ESA, under, after project description, ESA, and I was wondering what ESA was, I didn't, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see a definition for that acronym.
ESA stands for Environmental Site Assessment.
What's the E?
Environmental.
Environmental.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then on packet page 29, under Task B Documents, uh, the last sentence says, "This will include integration of the requirement of the IIG funding source," and I was wondering what IIG is.
IIG stands for Infra, Infrastructure Grant, that's the source of funding for the project.
Okay. Those are all my questions for that, thank you very much, Rachel.
Do we have any public input on that item?
Checking for online public input, I see none.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I, um, sat in on a lot of the Plaza Improvement Task Force, um, meetings and all, and, um, I'm looking forward to, um, changing the design of Eighth and Ninth Street, but in the meantime, I did come, uh, to City Hall when I noticed really, um, horrible road conditions, especially on Eighth Street there by the co-op at the intersection of Eighth and I, and, um, it would be nice in the outreach and, um, public information to, before projects are happening, to maybe let people know, people like me who are concerned about a really bad curb or a pothole in the street, to know that a big project's being planned, I mean, because a lot of these projects just get happened, and then the regular citizenry doesn't know what's going on, because they're not coming to the meetings like I am, or whatever, so I think public information prior to these events, so that when I keep going by that horrible curb or the pothole in the street, I know that something's being planned, um, to fix it, you know, even if it's not gonna happen tomorrow. So just, you know, a comment, um, about advance notice for all this, so thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
So I would like to make a motion then, um, to award a contract in the amount of $59,846 to CSW Stuber Storch Engineering Group to provide preliminary engineering, public engagement, and environmental analysis for the Eighth and Ninth Streets Improvement Project.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item F.
Um, yeah, I think maybe I'm just confused, I'll wait. On item F, um, I think maybe I'm just confused about, about it, is this, it looks like Arcata House was gonna do a separate contract and pay 36,000 for this work, but now we're paying the 36,000?
No, it was supposed to be paid by the grant either way, and it was through them or through us, so now, it'll be, still be paid by the grant, but instead of they taking the work, we are helping them to take the work, to do the work.
Okay, so we're not paying for it? That's the short?
The grant is paid for it, yes.
Great. And that's my only question for that one. I'll make a motion to approve item G.
F.
F, sorry, I'm not there yet, trying, trying to get there.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public, um, comments on this?
No online public comment.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're on item G.
Um, how much is the grant for?
Yes, good evening, council members and mayor, um, we are currently still working on the scope, exact scope for the grant. Um, we are envisioning a grant with the county, city is the applicant, for around 500,000, and that grant requires a 50% match of what you request, and so we may be taking out elements or be able to add elements depending upon our total matching funds, and we've been working very closely with Humboldt County Library and the County Administrative Office, ADA Coordinating Office, um, and the county is currently compiling what they can provide as a match, and based on that, we will then apply for the grant amount that we're able to meet a match for.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a motion to approve item G.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public input on item G?
Uh, no online public input.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item E.
Um, yeah, I was just hoping I could, uh, just please get an explanation of, um, what was going on with the different positions.
Now, what's the question?
Uh, I was just curious what this item was, if you could please explain it to me?
Yeah, um, we currently have a position that's titled Water Wastewater Operator One slash Two, and to be able to, um, open our candidate pool, we are creating, um, a more entry-level position that in the Plant Operator Series is called Operator in Training, and this is, um, it has some reduced requirements to meet the standards, um, and opens our candidate pool so that we can, um, help fill the positions, and it gives a track for them to be able to still obtain the certifications that are required by the state for us to run the plant.
Thank you, that makes sense. Uh, that's my only question.
Is there any public input on this item?
Uh, no online public input on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve item H.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and item I.
Yeah, again, I was just hoping I could, uh, get some clarity on what was going on with this, um, it just seems like it's come back a couple times, three times or something, um, and we keep, um, amending things and making new resolutions, and I was just trying to understand how it all fit together.
Um, sure, I'll try and give a, a synopsis of what's going on here, and I also have a couple of changes, staff is going to pull the item as well. The Home Key Grant is a fairly new, uh, program, and they've made changes this round, um, that weren't included in the last round, and so, uh, both the, uh, technical assistance team from the state that was helping applicants put their applications together, um, as well as the, the program staff themselves are sort of on a, a learning curve, if you will. In addition, it's kind of a complex program that have a lot of interdependent variables depending on, uh, what, uh, inputs in there are for, uh, for rents, for example, it changes the dollar amount, the full dollar amount for the, um, for the program. And so, Resolution 212-51 is attempting to correct the, uh, the dollar figure for the grant amount, uh, last time for this one, it's $20 million. Um, we have, uh, received technical assistance, typically when you submit a grant application, you submit it in, if your application doesn't meet the thresholds, or there's something wrong with the application, they kick it out and they go on to the next applicant. Uh, with this application process, they're actually vetting through and finding applicants who, um, you know, the applications that are, are qualified and moving forward, and if there are little issues that need to be corrected, or they need to, you know, you know, change some of the, the dollar figures, they're working with us to correct those applications through the review process. So, uh, the, this item before you tonight is on the Red Roof Inn Home Key Project, and the HCD staff have said we've made it through the preliminary criteria to get into the second round of review, and they've asked for a couple of changes. The, um, Resolution 212-51, uh, updates the grant amount to $20 million, and it was intended also to remove Redwood Community Action Agency... And it was intended also to remove Redwood Community Action Agency as a co-applicant. We received some technical assistance from from HCD's team that said that they had to be a co-applicant. And HCD has since said, no, they don't have to be a co-applicant. And so I would ask that on packet page 53 on Resolution 212-51, on paragraph B of the recitals, that you strike the words "and Redwood Community Action Agency Corporation" in quotes in the parentheses, and then adopt 212-51 as modified. We have also received information. We met with the technical assistance team on, I believe it was Thursday of last week. We had some follow up emails to address the loan that the city was proposing. And then met with their lead staff today to resolve on this question around the loan. Essentially, what they've said is that unlike most HCD funds that become state funds, these are direct federal funds. And the federal regulations don't allow the city to enter into a loan agreement to transfer these funds. That we're basically co-applicants. Now, I need to dig into this in a little bit more detail. I'm not prepared to make a proposal for revision to this resolution tonight. But what I would ask is that you not adopt this resolution tonight. HCD has said that we cannot enter a loan agreement, that there's no need for us to enter a regulatory agreement. And we still have some objectives that we wanted to work with the property owners or work with the project proposers to ensure that there are some community engagement ongoing. And so I need some time to come back at your next meeting and propose what that agreement would look like. But it wouldn't be an agreement that would affect title. So it's a little different. We didn't understand this going into the Home Key application process. They wouldn't let us do our, you know, our standard practice for how we work with with our housing providers. And so we're having to respond to, you know, these new regulations that have come up. So to summarize, adopt Resolution 212-51 with the removal of, yes, it would be on your on your agenda, item I. The first part, striking the and adopt Resolution Number 212-52, amending Resolution Number 212-38. But with that one amendment to 212-51, striking and Redwood Community Action Agency Corporation.
And Chris Dart from Danco Communities is also here on Zoom if the council had questions, just so you know.
So just to be clear, in a motion that is going to be made, we're removing that last portion, that we're not going to adopt Resolution Number 212-52.
Correct.
And dash 38, because that's still going to be updated and modified. And we'll see that again. Okay.
So the the funding has changed. Originally, we thought it was from the state. And now it's from the feds. And so that's why they want, they're saying that the city has to be part of.
It's, yeah, it's still through the state. The state is the granting agency. But typically with, for example, community development block grant funds, those are block grants to the state. And then they become state funds to distribute. And they're subject to state rules. And each of the states can regulate them differently. The Home Key Funds are direct federal funds. And so the state is acting as a conduit instead of managing its own fund. So it has some strings attached that we weren't aware of going into this that we have to comply with now.
So, I mean, when we first, when this first came before us, it was super time sensitive. So is it becoming like more of something we can take a little bit more time with now? Or is it still like?
It's, yeah, the pressure is still on, unfortunately. In fact, they have, they extended their deadlines to allow us to have this meeting tonight. You know, I told them, look, we just can't pull a special meeting together. They wanted this information last week. There are a couple other bits and pieces that have to be put together by tomorrow, by Thursday of this week. Because they're moving forward to the next stage in reviewing these applications.
So, but at the end of the day, because they've been giving us such attention and feedback, it's positive, correct?
Yeah, we think it's very positive. We would not be in this situation if we didn't have strong applications. I think the fact that, you know, though it's, you know, unfortunate that we're coming back to amend this yet again, it's a really positive sign that we're coming back to amend this once again.
No, that's great. I'd rather do it right and take some time to.
So we're going to apply for it by ourselves? Is that?
We're actually co-applicants with Danco.
Okay.
Communities who would be responsible for, you know, building and out the project.
Okay, I see that now.
Yep.
So it's just the city of Arcata and Danco?
Yeah, correct. And removing Redwood Community Action Agency.
And then if awarded, the 20 million goes to the city?
I'm sorry, if awarded.
The 20 million goes to the city?
The 20 million, my understanding of how it works is that, yes, we would basically receive the $20 million. And then we would be paying out. We'd be responsible for managing the payout on the construction. When we get to the portions that are direct rent subsidies, because there's some some operating subsidy in there, I believe that would go directly to Danco.
Okay.
All right. Well, then I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 212-51 as modified. Do I need anything else?
I think that's good.
All right, cheers.
Second. Do we have any public input on this item?
There's no online public input.
Okay, then we'll call the vote.
Aye.
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 All right, that takes us to new business. So item A, consider adopting Resolution Number 212-54, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, accepting the mid-year budget budget review and approving associated budget revisions for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And I believe we have our finance director here to have, give us a staff report. So thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am Andrea Starjevsky, Finance Director here at the City of Arcata. And tonight I am presenting our mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2022. So I want to start off with a few key terms that are related to our overall budget process and mid-year process. First of all, you'll see throughout the staff report and throughout the presentation, our overall accounting structure here at the city is fund accounting. And we have various fund types. But I wanted to start with what the definition of a fund is. It's an independent fiscal and accounting entity used to record all financial transactions related to the specific purpose for which the fund was created. So if you think about the individual unit of a fund, it's almost like a small company. It has revenues, it has expenditures. For the various fund types here at the city, we have a couple others, but I will highlight about four different types. So general is for just general operating activities here at the city that typically don't have a restricted use. Our special revenue funds are actually those that are restricted for use. And some examples are some of our housing-related or community development-related funds. There are restrictions on the use of those funds for federal funding purposes and state funding purposes. We also have enterprise funds here at the city. So that would be our water fund, wastewater fund, stormwater, transit, solid waste. And those are almost like business enterprise units. They generate various fees to cover their costs. And then we also have two internal service funds. So that is our central garage fund and our information technology fund. Central Garage is responsible for maintenance of heavy equipment and machinery and maintenance of our fleet vehicles. The expenses incurred by that fund are then charged out to various departments citywide based on who is operating the machinery or the vehicles. And then the other internal service fund is our information technology fund, which is very similar to Central Garage, but responsible for maintaining equipment such as cell phones, laptops, desktops, public safety equipment, other information technology infrastructure. And those costs are also charged out citywide to reimburse the cost of that fund. And another term that you'll see throughout the budget presentation and the staff report is a fund balance. So high level, this is the amount of financial resources available for use in a given fund. Generally, this represents the detail of all the operating surpluses and deficits since the fund's inception. And there are two different snapshots to keep in mind when looking at fund balance. One is what we continually talk about on a, you know, quarterly basis, monthly basis, fiscal year activity basis. Where we're looking at the revenues of a fund and its expenditures, the difference between those two items equals the change in net position. If revenues exceed expenditures, that equates to a positive net position or surplus. If expenditures exceed revenues for a change in net position, that's actually a negative change in that position or what we call deficit. But one item to keep in mind for fund balance beyond our current year activity is that the fund balance is an accumulation of multiple fiscal years' worth of activity. So we start with the beginning of the fiscal year fund balance. We add or subtract whatever that change in that position is at the point in time when we're evaluating the fund accounts. And then that equates to what we consider the end of year, the end of fiscal year fund balance. And I also wanted to, high level, give council and the public a snapshot of where we are currently in the budget process. So we typically adopt a budget in June of a given fiscal year for the next or upcoming fiscal year. And there are changes that happen between that budget starting on July 1st all the way through mid-year presentation time period. But we typically kick off mid-year updates and planning for the next fiscal year in January of each fiscal year. Departments provide feedback. They're reviewing line by line item detail. That is being compiled typically in February. And then we head into March. We just had council's next budget year goal setting session. And now here we are at mid-year. Then we'll continue onward into May for our first public hearing. And hopefully in June, we'll have our second public hearing for budget adoption and the master fee adoption as well. So high level overview of what the mid-year review consists of. We're looking at basically revenue estimates and appropriations of expenditures, and we're evaluating those. Like I said, line by line, staff is reviewing and suggesting changes for proposed mid-year adoption or recommendations to council. And then we're also reviewing the year-end fund balance projections for the given fiscal year. So compared to the staff report, I am going to run through high level major changes to revenues and major changes to expenditures. And within your staff report, there are a couple of attachments that I did want to highlight that are on more of a detailed level perspective than what I am going to walk through as part of my presentation. So as part of your attachment one on page 61 in your packets, that includes a detailed line by line item breakout of the proposed changes for mid-year. And that does include what I consider classifications or what we call financial statement line item classifications. I'm only speaking on those high level groupings as part of this presentation. So for instance, one of those classifications for how we present revenue here at the city is intergovernmental revenue. And I do want to speak on the major changes there. So since budget adoption for fiscal year 2122 as of July, we are seeing or proposing a change of $1.1 million in additional revenue increases for that intergovernmental category. That intergovernmental revenue category consists of various grant-related funds. And it's named for its namesake because we're receiving money from other government agencies such as federal funding and then state funding. So two of the high level changes for that $1.1 million in total that we'll see through fiscal, through mid-year adoption is the one area of ARPA, so our American Rescue Plan Act. We're expecting from the time that we came in at budget adoption to program $516,000 worth of revenues this fiscal year for those particular activities. We received funding, I believe, last July. So now we are making sure that the program, the programs that council wishes for the city to complete with that funding source are being included in the mid-year budget adoption. We also have some changes related to CDBG or community development block grants, about $404,000 in total as part of this $1.1 million intergovernmental revenues. High level, there are many different grant programs that we have that we're working on citywide. For some of the CDBG programs, we have the MIST, the Mobile Intervention Services Team. We also have a community development block grant of outdoor events. And then we also have the Arcata House Partnership or Boyd Road related funding source. So just high level, major changes of the $516,000 and the $404,000 for the particular category of intergovernmental revenue. I also wanted to touch upon the increases for revenue that we're proposing related to various tax sources. So compared to budget adoption, recommending an increase of tax revenue of about $664,000. And kind of the largest changes for that proposed increase relate to sales tax revenue increase of about $245,000, a transactions and use tax increase of about $188,000, our transient and occupancy tax increase of $132,500, and also an increase of secured property taxes of about $100,000. So in total, about $674,000. Some smaller increases or decreases related to our parkland and lieu fees or taxes that are charged to equate to the $664,000 proposed. And I do want to remind the public and council that these tax revenue sources are very important to the general fund as the property tax, or sorry, the sales tax, transactions use tax, and transient occupancy tax represent about 39% of the total revenues for our general fund. I also want to point out that we'll continue to monitor if we need to revise these revenues as we move into the next fiscal year. Currently, we will monitor consumer trends as far as spending in the community and shopping goes with the inflation factors that we're seeing. We have quarterly meetings with our third party HCL to analyze our tax revenues to see if there are any major fluctuations or changes that we need to incorporate in our budget process going into the next fiscal year. And then moving on from the tax revenue source, we have a category called Other of $115,000 that we're recommending an increase of $115 altogether for mid-year budget adoption. So this is mainly comprised of the fact that we have $100,000 recommended increase for the sale of used vehicles and equipment. So we transferred over our manual surplus auction process to online, I guess, the online medium. And we received $100,000 in expected, or the revenues for the sale of that used, those used vehicles and equipment. And then we have a small change in operating transfers citywide to get to the $115,000 that we're proposing for the revenue increase. Overall, we do have some smaller decreases that are offsetting some of these revenues that we're proposing for mid-year. So we have a category for our financial statement line item purposes of fines and forfeitures. That's $55,000 and change. And that mainly consists of a decrease in expected revenue for parking fines. Parking enforcement revenues have been declining throughout the COVID-19 period. And we're reflecting that in the mid-year budget. We are also looking at a decrease in licenses and permits of $43,000. That is comprised of building permit decrease of about $25,000. And then parking meters, also a decrease of $22,000. Once again, for the parking meter line item, that is partly due to Cal Poly Humboldt not having live in-person meetings throughout part of this fiscal year and the negative impacts that COVID has had on generating that revenue source. The next slide is a, just a visual depiction of the different financial statement line item categories for the different revenue sources for the City of Arcata. And the green bar is the dollar amounts per adoption. And then that yellow bar is where we are at should council approve the mid-year adoption figures. High level items that we just ran through were intergovernmental revenue, taxes for some of the larger changes. And then for some of the decreases, the fines and forfeitures and the licenses and permits. And we also touch upon other revenue as well for increases proposed for the mid-year budget.
Andrea, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So when we see if we're looking at the end of the ledger sheet here, both the negatives and the in the revenue and then the positives in the expenditures, that's basically money that we either thought we were going to get or thought we were going to spend, but then did not or did not spend it, and now we're adjusting for that.
Exactly. And sometimes, just in the normal course of business, departments will propose, I need another $5,000 in a particular line. They're encouraged to first see if there's other expense lines that can be reduced first, or other revenues to cover increases before proposing those changes. So some of those decreases you see are offset by revenues, or are just a decrease in one expense line and an increase in a different expense line to offset that. You're welcome. I'm going to stop there to see if there are any other questions before I move on to expenditures. Okay, thank you. So as far as expenditures go, very similar structure. We have different categories that represent what we call financial statement line items. And the top three changes from budget adoption to mid-year adoption are debt service, capital outlays, and then the category called materials and services. For the debt service category, I did want to point out, this is a $1.1 million increase related to our sewer I&amp;I or inflow and infiltration project. So that was completed, I believe, a couple fiscal years ago, and we received grant funding to support that project. But we also had the option where we received reimbursement funds from the State Water Resources Control Board to cover some of the costs of that project. But since the sewer fund has healthy reserves, and we are looking at potential funding for the wastewater treatment plant project, the thought process was to pay this down to look more favorable and to save on total interest. So basically, this was a 30-year note for over $1 million, and by paying this off early, I believe back in October of last year, the city has saved over $325,000 in interest. And the wastewater reserves are healthy and able to support our wastewater treatment plant project and other projects as we move forward. As far as capital outlay increases, we had a total of about $1 million that we're proposing here at mid-year. And some of the major changes related to that are a couple of different grant-related projects and some other purchases kind of mixed in. But high-level, $140,000 related to grant funding that we're proposing for the 30th Street project for the UROC Housing Authority, their charging stations that are in that capital outlay line proposed at mid-year. We also have some other items programmed, such as a mini excavator purchase of $40,000, a $40,000 increase to continue with an in-process permitting program related to vendor open gov. And I did want to take a step back, too, as this will get highlighted as we jump into general fund overview for reserves. But there is also $507,000 included in that capital outlay, $1 million amount, related to our maintenance of effort requirement for streets. So if you will recall, back in fiscal year 2020, 2021, we came to council at mid-year to approve an allocation of over $1.2 million, and this was to help us secure our SB1 funds for streets-related projects. We were not able to see the ending balance of June 30th, 2021, activity until we closed the books for that fiscal year. So of that $1.2 million, a little over $770,000 of that $1.2 was allocated and was able to be spent in fiscal year 2021 to help us meet our MOE requirement for fiscal year 1920. The State Controller's Office allows us to play catch-up in subsequent fiscal years to make sure the general fund is spending at least $1.2 million on street-related projects for us to continue to receive SB1-related funds. So that $1.2 is set aside. Our reserves exceeded 25%, and council said if anything exceeds 25%, you are good to go, to set aside the $1.2 for the maintenance of effort requirement. However, we still have $507,000 of that $1.2 million that has gone unspent related to street projects, and that is currently programmed or budgeted for in this current fiscal year to help us meet that MOE requirement or maintenance of effort requirement. I also wanted to point out, for materials and services, we are proposing an increase of $670,000 from mid-year budget updates. And some of the drivers for that, I failed to include increases for bank service fees, which are offset by a projected investment income of about $120,000 at our adopted budget. So that's being included here in the mid-year budget schedule. And then we also had some expenditures for projects that were not wrapped up in fiscal year 2021. We typically call them carryovers, where we have open purchase orders that we have worked to still complete in a given fiscal year once we close out a fiscal year. That was about $45,000. And then we also have another $40,000, so to speak, budgeted for professional services related to the installation of charging stations for the 30th Street project. It's about $212,000 of the total materials and services, amount of $670,000. Then the offset to a lot of the grant revenues we're receiving, we are programming for ARPA funding, or the American Rescue Plan Act, professional services expenditures of $310,000. We have $40,000 programmed for MIST, or Mobile Intervention Services Team, $200,000 to start our safe parking program, $40,000 for KUNA contract, and then $30,000 to start our community ambassador program.
So while she's catching her breath, I just want to say, the council has approved higher figures than that for your ARPA projects. What Andrea has added into this year's budget is just what we think we'll spend between now and June 30th, recognizing the council still has many of those dollars allocated that you'll see show up in the 2223 budget as we get into that process.
And this next graph is a depiction of the citywide expenditures. Once again, the green bar chart is for the adopted figures versus the mid-year proposed updates by financial statement line item category. And what I did want to point out, I ran through many increases to expenditures but not decreases. There are certain line items that you will see decreases for our citywide expenses. However, none of those expenses, I guess, exceeded the amount that was initially adopted. So as you can see, all of these changes still equated to a higher than what was adopted expense amount that we're proposing for mid-year adoption. And here, high-level, wanted to discuss the general fund. So currently, per policy that's in place, our objective is to keep a minimum of 25% of our operating expenditures tucked away in our city's general fund reserve. As of right now, what's being proposed to council for mid-year adoption will bring us to a 33% reserve, and what was initially budgeted was a reserve of 27%. So you will see on attachment two for the fund balance of fiscal year 2022 on page 69, that our estimated year-end available general fund reserves are about $4.7 million. And I wanted to point out, that was what was initially adopted included a surplus for general fund of about $18,000. And then what you're seeing now with the different changes, there is a chart on page 57 for our general fund reserves that kind of includes a walk of how we started at $18,710 for what was initially adopted, and then how we are now arriving at $359,000 for what we're considering an additional draw on general fund reserves. I wanted to add a little bit more clarity to that chart that's included in the staff report. So I have, I guess, alphabetical, just not numbering, but letters here to kind of demonstrate the titles of each of the columns. So column B is what you would have seen as part of adopted budget for what we estimated the beginning fund balance for general fund reserves, or the beginning general fund reserve balance of 4.2 million.
Is this in the packet?
Yes, part of the chart is on page 57 for the reserve breakout. The one thing you don't see in that chart is the calculation at the bottom for the change in net position. I added that just to add a little bit more clarity for what we're looking at for the proposed change. I'm just going to look at that, too, while I'm looking at my slide. So the total change in net position that was initially adopted, so the increase to the general fund reserves is about $18,000. However, when we adopted budget, there were a couple of items that were not included, one being the maintenance of effort requirement, the split between fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2122 of the $507,000. We also had 4% cost-of-living allowance increases that were approved by council after budget adoption. The sum of the cost-of-living allowance and the maintenance of effort requirement, $507,000, equates to the change that you see of the $754,000 total. That would have been an additional drawdown on general fund reserves had we gone back and edited the projected fund balance. Where we come to now is column D at mid-year for the changes being proposed as we went back, updated the beginning balance as we closed out the fiscal year for all the activity for last fiscal year 2021, and then where we come to with our ending projected balance of 4.7 million. So we're projecting an overall draw on general fund reserves by the time we close out this fiscal year of $359,000. But it's still in a better position than where we would have been had we updated everything as we closed out the fiscal year to demonstrate to council. We expect to draw down another $754,000 in total. That change is about $378,000, where we are not spending as much or dipping into the general fund reserves by as much as what we would have projected had we gone back and updated the fund balance pages as part of the budget adoption. So I do want to stop there to see if there are any questions before I go into program changes.
Yeah, can I ask, so that, then what you're saying here reflects that idea that initially it was budgeted to be 27%, and now we're seeing, because we are going to be spending less overall, up to that 33%?
Exactly.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And column C, the $754,000. So none of that money's been spent?
So of that $754,000, $359,000 is projected to be where we will end the fiscal year. Some of that has been spent on the cost-of-living allowance increases. I believe it's about $247,000 for general fund. So as we move throughout the fiscal year, some of that has already been spent as the 4% increase has been enacted as of July 1st last year. And then as we move along with street projects, we will be spending down some of that $507,000 for the maintenance of effort requirement.
So I'm going to try to help. All of the $754,000, those two allocations that the council made, we do project to spend all of that this fiscal year. I'm looking at nature to see if he's going to pay those paving dollars out. But we do predict to spend all of that $754. But all the other changes, the increases in tax revenue, the decreases in other expenditures, the increases in grant revenues that have come, are leaving your general fund in a net better position than we could have promised you at the moment that the council made those additional allocations. I think the important line to draw your attention to is the ending balance on June 30th, 2022. So this is the second line in that column. You can look at it in your budget book or on the screen. When you adopted the budget, you expected the fund, your general fund balance at the end of the fiscal year to be $4.24 million, right? After you adopted the budget, and we moved the money for streets, and we approved the employee agreements with the cost-of-living increases, we would have expected, and we closed out the fiscal year, put any money that we hadn't spent back into the general fund reserve. At that point, we would have estimated that at the end of this fiscal year, your general fund would have been about $100,000 higher than at the time that you adopted the budget, or $4,329,000. Here at mid-year, with all of the changes, increases in tax revenues that have come in, increases in grants, decreases in expenditures, we are estimating your general fund balance at the end of this fiscal year to be $4,724,000. So you are not increasing in what your general fund reserve will be at the end of this fiscal year.
How much are we increasing?
From the day you adopted the budget until now, that is about $500,000.
But that's the money that we just didn't spend, right? As part of the SB1 stuff?
No, no, no. Nope, nope. That includes spending all the SB1. That'll be money that you can look at this fiscal year, this next fiscal year of how you want to spend. That'll be money in the bank to spend.
Okay.
Because that's all the plus and minuses, right? Between, A, money we didn't spend, but also, I mean, grant monies that have come in, you know, everything that you just explained, right? So we are still sitting in a net better position.
Right.
Could you go over those bottom red numbers again, like the ones in D and E?
Can you, sorry, can you repeat that?
Could you go over the bottom numbers in D and E again? What are those?
Sure. So that is taking the beginning balance in column D, taking the beginning balance as of 630, 2021 that we've updated as we closed out the fiscal year, and then where we believe the ending balance will be for the general fund reserve as we are right now if council adopts the mid-year changes with the revenue increases, expenditure increases, decreases, what have you, where we believe we will be drawing $359,000 from reserves based off of all the changes from 7-1 through 12-31. And then column E is the estimated mid-year balances less where we started the fiscal year at. So the overall changes are $378,319 if we adopt mid-year and we compare to where we started the fiscal year at, or what we believe the values would have been at the time of budget adoption.
Okay, so the general, or I guess, I'm thinking about the reserves.
Yep.
I guess the general fund, so they're going to decrease by that much money?
Yes.
Okay, but, so I guess I'm confused because, go ahead.
Your general fund between the time you adopted the budget and the estimate now will increase $500,000. It's $490,000, it looks like. No, I'm just looking at column B, estimated at the time of adoption, right? What the general fund reserve was going to be at the end of the fiscal year. That's the second line, $4,240,000. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So then come down, estimated at mid-year, in that same line, what's the general fund reserve balance going to look like at the end of the fiscal year is now $4,724,000.
And that increase of $483,000.
Yeah.
And then where did the increase come from?
The increase came from additional revenues that we received last fiscal year that then got moved into the reserve at the end of the fiscal year. And they have come from increase in revenues that we have seen this fiscal year that have been deposited into the general fund as well. I mean, I will say, our finance director is very conservative in the estimates that she makes in regards to sales tax and transaction use tax and bed tax. But what we have done is looked at, we had estimates basically for each quarter of the fiscal year. And what we looked at was what cash in hand from those tax sources we received between July and December, and we added that in as an estimate of revenue, because it was actually cash in hand. We brought in that money, so we added that into the budget, what was above and beyond our estimates, right? Our estimates are conservative. So what was above and beyond that that we actually received until December, we have put in at mid-year to capture that. We have not changed our projections that we made for January through June. So we do expect to see that trending higher. We do hope to actually end the fiscal year in a better position than this, but we feel like this is realistic. It's a good budget number, and it's still conservative. And it does have your general fund growing.
Excellent.
Okay, so the reserve is going to be $378,000.
I would have to calculate, but it's about $500,000 looking at this.
From 27% to 33%. Yeah, on that number, which is...
Your microphone, sorry.
And then in addition to that, we're spending more money than we originally projected.
Yes, we did. We've received some additional grants. We are spending ARPA funds that we didn't budget for in the beginning of the year. So yes, we will be spending more money.
Okay.
But the net of all of that is still an extra close to $500,000 that'll be in your reserve at the end of the fiscal year.
Right, that's the, okay.
I do get it's confusing. Government accounting wasn't meant to not be confusing. Government accounting wasn't meant to not be confusing.
No, and I do appreciate the, you know, the both of you teaming up to help break it down in various ways for us, because sometimes it takes a few tries.
So the last slide here is just to highlight changes that are on page 59 for program changes. So I did kind of speak on some of these items earlier in the presentation. So as part of mid-year budget adoption, we are including $40,000 to continue our online permitting project with OpenGov. We have $5,000 budgeted out of our ARPA funds for supervision related to our outreach programs. Believe that is for acting pay for one of our officers, and the acting pay is to act as a sergeant for the overseeing basically MIST safe parking program and the community ambassador program. And we also are including $40,000 in the central garage budget for purchase or pre-order of a mini excavator as delivery is not expected until early summer to work on various trail projects for the city. And that is it for my slides, and I'm open to answer any questions the council may have.
I just want to say thank you for being so thorough and clear. I know that your department is short-staffed and that you've been working a lot, and so I just want you to know that, very appreciated, so thank you.
Yeah, you are a rock star, Andrea. That's, yeah, very clear, just like, so clear, and I appreciate that, it's excellent.
This says, so I'm looking at packet page 57 in the first paragraph in our general fund. The council also approved the allocation of $754,522 in net income above projections from the previous fiscal year to support city's required contribution to maximize our allocation of SB 1 paving funds. So is that different from the 1.2 million that you mentioned?
So this is part of that, so that $754,000, part of it is $507,000 related to the 1.2 in total, so the 1.2 is split, where we spent $770,000 prior fiscal year, we have $507,000 left to spend in this current fiscal year for the maintenance of effort requirement, and then there's still $240 something odd dollars related to the employee cost of living increases. So between the COLA increases and the MOE $507,000, that's how we got to the $754,000.
That is, but that is the same, you're right on that that's the exact same allocation we were just talking about.
Okay. Why didn't we spend that additional money matching the SB 1?
We are, we are spending all of it. We just spent half of it, we were able to spend half of it last fiscal year with getting projects moving forward, and then we're spending the remaining of it this fiscal year.
Okay, but I thought, we said that it was going back into the reserve.
What you said was at the end of last fiscal year, monies that we had above and beyond the 25%, we should, we should look at allocating the dollars that we need to make our MOE match and move those to streets funds to fund those projects. So because we work on a fiscal basis and the budget is what we're going to spend and what we're going to bring in, and just in that snapshot of those 12 months, we allocated 700-plus thousand of that in last fiscal year that we were able to spend, and then we're saying, let's put that $500,000 that streets can spend this year, and that will complete our MOE for all of the years required.
Okay, I thought we said that we were putting money back into the reserve.
We are also doing that.
Okay, so it's a different money?
Different money. We're going to spend it all, and you're going to have money left over. It is great news tonight, I do just have to say. It is good, I mean, it is. Yeah. Yeah, we are going to do both. And I know the numbers are kind of similar, I'm telling you, you're going to have about $500,000 additional, and then the MOE money that we're spending this year also happens to be $507,000, so that might be what's creating the confusion. But we are doing both.
So how much more money total did we have than we projected at the start of the fiscal year?
Let me calc it, it's that, I think I sent that, oh, we sent that, maybe that number two in an email, but let me calc it. Andrea can probably do it quicker on her Excel.
So the, I just want to make sure, have a clarifying question. So the beginning balance for 6/30/2021, the overall change from what we had estimated of the $4,000,000.2 at the time of budget adoption versus where we're at now with the $5 million at mid-year, it's $861,000 additional. But as we get towards the end of the fiscal year, the number will now be $483,000 as we end 6/30/2022.
That's what the proposed change is?
Correct.
Yep. And that includes the street dollars.
So then how much are we spending on additional stuff? This is $245,000? No, that's something else.
No, so you'll have, you'll have the streets dollars spent, and you'll be adding $483,357 to the general fund reserve.
Okay, and then where does it show the budget increase from what was projected?
If you look on page 57, that same top, that shows the budget increase, the balance, your general fund balance, I mean, it's that fund.
But that's the general fund reserve, are they the same?
Yes.
So basically, there's one account, and it kind of serves as the account we do all the transactions through, and it's also where the money gets saved that we don't spend, in a sense.
So it's an accumulation of the changes for money coming in and money spent. The difference between that, that then goes into the reserve. So at any given time, if we spend more money than we bring in, we'll be drawing money out of the reserve. If we bring in more money than we spend, we'll be adding to the reserve.
Okay, so the reserve and the general fund are kind of the same thing?
The...
I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's the difference.
Yeah, it's the difference that gets added on an annual...
But it's one fund, there's not like a general fund reserve and a general fund?
No, so the general fund itself is just a way to say, here are all the general operating activities of the city in one place, we just want to look at the general operating revenues and general operating expenditures, and the difference between those, all that activity, and then what's left over goes into the, a particular accounting line item called fund balance line, and that's what we're evaluating for the general fund. But they're very similar fund balance lines across all the funds citywide to account for all the activities and what's left over, or what if we spend more than what we brought in as well.
And maybe a helpful clarifying question, right? I mean, the, the general fund reserve is that minimum 25% of the general fund that we set aside to have...
Correct.
...in reserve. And then seeing that initially we budgeted to have that at 27%, but now we're going to see that increase to 33% in our reserves of the total general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Just roughly, what is our yearly, our annual budget?
For citywide?
Yeah.
About $45 million.
I emailed some questions to staff, and I got some of the answers, I haven't had time to go over them all, but one of them, says there are a few program changes outlined And then it says, overall mid-year budget estimates, estimates $483,357 more in general fund revenues that will be added to the city's reserve. So is that...
That's exactly the number I just recalculated on my phone.
Okay.
I'm glad that they matched.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Cool.
If you go to page 69 in your packet, this might make a little more sense. I don't know, I'm just trying something here. But you look at that very top on page 69, that's your mid-year fund balance. So that first line item... So that very first line item... Sorry, the very first line item, general fund, you're going to see the fund balance at the beginning of the fiscal year. This has all been updated, so this is all fresh numbers with the proposed mid-year. But what you see is the general fund does have more than $4 million that runs through it in a year, right? In this particular fiscal year, we are estimating $14,900,000 in revenues coming in. And then we have transfers that also come in. So for example, wastewater pays a portion of basically rent for city hall or for finance staff to do their billing, right? Those are transfers in, or grants that come in. And then all of the expenditures at $16 million, right? So those are all the monies that run through that general fund. But what you're looking at is what is that fund balance, which equates to what is your reserve at the beginning of the fiscal year and at the end of the fiscal year. And that's where, what we're showing you at mid-year is that where you thought you were actually going to add $18,000 when you adopted the budget, you're going to add $483,000 to the reserve at the end of the year.
Thank you very much. What's the parkland and loo fund?
Parkland and loo fees are paid by developers when they are not designating parkland as part of their development.
Why is there less money in community development grants? I don't know, I wrote these the other day, does that make sense?
Yeah, so are you looking at packet page 69? Or are you looking just overall? There have been changes throughout the mid-year budget adoption where there have been decreases across some of the community development programs. We had one salaries decrease where there's $125,000, I think, on Fund 213 that should not have been budgeted there as part of our initial budget adoption. There are some other decreases where there are programs or projects that are not, that were originally programmed that are not expected to draw out of those same funds for this fiscal year, but there are some increases too for various community development funds as part of mid-year, where we have a couple of loans that we're expecting to close and bring in additional principal collections, but there are some decreases throughout the mid-year as well for various community development grants.
Thank you. How much overtime did we pay last year?
I would have to pull...
I think it's in here somewhere. I guess my question was, it seemed like a large number, and why do we spend so much on overtime instead of hiring more employees?
Yeah, we're trying, but you'll see, you know, majority of the overtime is in the police department, and there is a part of that that's just inherent within policing. We don't know what crime is going to occur, and when crime happens, people are all working overtime, right? And until you get that particular crime, you know, not, well, hopefully dissolved and at least the case wrapped up. So that accounts for it, and reduced staffing in dispatch and police to be able to cover patrol and dispatch also accounts for a portion of that, and we've seen smaller, much smaller amounts than of overtime in other departments that have been short-staffed as well. But we are actively recruiting and hiring, and, and our applicant pools are getting better, so that's the upward trend anyway.
How come you're not recommending to hire more staff?
We will be looking at that seriously at next fiscal year, and some gaps that we have been struggling with for several years, but that's not typically something I would be bringing at mid-year, and we are actively still trying to fill several vacancies, so that will be our priority between now and July. But you will see, hopefully, a budget next year that does include some modest staff increases where we have some real critical gaps.
Thank you. There's one account description in here that said other professional services. I think it had like a couple hundred thousand dollars coming out of it, maybe more. I was just wondering what those professional services are.
Yep, do you have a packet page number I can look at, just to refer?
You can find it.
Okay, for the breakout. Yeah, I have it too.
Hmm, yeah, well, I thought there was another category too.
I have a breakout of, I guess, the total other professional services for the mid-year adoption. I think it's $324,700. So there are a couple different line items here. We have one related to public safety, about $6,000 for pre-employment screening to fill, I guess for new hires to fill vacant and unfrozen patrol and dispatch positions, $2,000 for Activity 85 for buildings, just as a general buildings maintenance augmentation, $8,000 in our streets fund for increased budget for tree service removal. We have three line items related to the ARPA fund for safe parking program, the MIST program continuation, community ambassador program, and COONA. We budget all those as professional services because they're third-party contracts with those different entities. And then we have a small reduction on stormwater of about $1,300, and that was made on the professional services line to offset a needed increase on the utilities expense line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then there was one description that just said projects.
Yes, so I believe that was on the home program income fund, where there was initially $100,000 budgeted and was deemed no longer needed by community development as part of the mid-year review. I believe typically there are dollar amounts budgeted in programs and projects across our home program income and our CDPG or community development block grant program income, and those can change just depending on the needs throughout any given fiscal year.
What are other employee, employee benefits?
So those are comprised of our normal payroll cycle, every bi-weekly payroll period. That will include PERS payments, medical benefits, similar to the REMIF check for medical premium, dental, vision, any benefit that the employees derive as being employed here at the city as part of our normal payroll cycle.
Thank you, that makes sense. What are internal service funds on page 68?
So I believe it's going to be our central garage fund and our information technology fund, where the central garage fund is responsible for maintaining vehicles and heavy equipment and billing those expenditures out citywide based on the operator, and then our information technology fund is responsible for hardware, software, maintenance, computers, laptops, public safety equipment, where those expenses are incurred and they're billed out based off of whatever employee is using that equipment citywide.
Under special revenue funds on page 69, there's Special Revenue Fund 204, and it's an acronym POST. I was wondering what that is.
Yes, I do not know the exact acronym for POST.
Police officer standardized training. And so this is, this is a fund that's used, that we receive state funding for to a... And so this is a fund that's used that we receive state funding for to assist with police officer training to meet those standards, the POST standards that we are credited by in our police department.
Yeah, and I just kind of have like, there's probably like a dozen funds that I just have questions for. I mean, I feel bad, you know, keeping people here, but I guess this is where I have to do it. So Fund 212, industrial park.
So that is for our Food Works Industrial Rental Kitchen.
Fund 214, residential construction tax.
This is a fund that, similar to the recreation fee for new construction, the residential construction tax is a fee that is on non-residential. So it's on business and mixed-use development that pays towards park and recreation amenities.
So, I'm sorry, so if there's new construction that's residential?
Yeah, I think it's just labeled wrong. That should say Recreation Construction Tax.
Okay, that makes, I don't know what you're saying then. 218, Proposition 172.
So that is a sales tax fund related to public safety. And we receive those on, I believe it should be a quarterly basis. We receive those through the Auditor Controller's Office. They're funneled from the State Controller's Office and they're deposited in Fund 218. They support public safety-related activities.
Okay. Fund 219, it's an acronym.
So ISTEA stands for Federal Intermodal Surface Transportation Efficiency Act funds. And it's related to, I have the budget book open, so I'm reading through the fund titles, but it's related to street and transit-related expenses.
Okay. 221?
So that is our COPS fund. It's for frontline services. Basically, COPS stands for Citizens Option for Public Safety Supplemental Law Enforcement Services. And we receive that from the State Controller's Office as an allocation through the Auditor Controller's Office, about $100,000 a year for frontline safety services.
232?
So that is our 30th Street project. We have a MOU with the York Housing Authority for the actual construction of the 30th Street Commons Project.
233?
So that is our Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program.
298, Health Sport Note.
So that is a fund that was used to accumulate payments, I believe, when the Health Sport was constructed. And it's just a historical fund that we still have in the books. I believe there are some residual dollars left in that fund.
Okay. And then what's 297, the PERS phase in?
So that was money that was set aside for future PERS payments at one point in time. And I believe we had proceeds from various insurance premiums at one point in time that we were setting aside for future PERS payments, and that's sitting in that fund.
Could you remind me what the special assessment districts are? Like, how do those work?
Yes, so we have three different special assessment districts. One is the Mad River Business Park. We have James Creek and Windsong. I believe we have various.
There's also one here for Curtis Heights.
Yes, and I believe it has a small dollar amount still left in there, but I don't think that's active any longer. So for these three different assessment districts, on an annual basis, we provide a city engineer's report, an assessment of city costs in order to maintain these districts. So things like landscaping, lighting, what have you. And then we apply direct charges to the property tax rolls for the residents of those three different districts to derive revenue to cover the staff costs of maintaining those areas.
Okay.
And you'll see, you do approve that engineer's report and that request to make those assessments each year as part of the budget process, and that will be actually before you at your next meeting.
Trust Funds 500, city trust accounts.
Yes, so we have, I would say, at least 10 different trust funds where the city sets aside funding for restricted purposes. For example, we have a Drug Task Force Fund for public safety where some of those funds are restricted for use. We have a fund for APD evidence for general planned housing updates. So different fees are derived or different property is accumulated and set aside in these particular funds. And the city is the trustee of these funds, but they aren't necessarily funds that the city of Arcata can just tap into and use at will.
Thank you. So in Fund 775, IT Services and Maintenance?
Yes.
The start of the fiscal year, it was negative $146,000?
Yes.
So how does it start negative?
So as part of the IT fund, we do charge expenditures out to all the other funds to recover costs. The one item, we have pension obligations that we need to break out in better detail for fund balance. So IT fund is doing its job. It's putting money away. It's saving for replacement costs. But at the end of the fiscal year, from an accounting closure perspective, we include entries which basically reevaluate pension obligations. Because we have employees that are allocated out of the IT Services and Maintenance Fund that are some of the higher costing employees or are classic PERS employees, that liability is, or future potential expenses for that fund are driving down what we call the fund balance. It's not a cash movement, as you would expect. The IT fund is not spending more money than it's bringing in, but these individual one-time year-end entries are driving it down where its liabilities are greater than the asset sitting on the fund as far as if the IT fund closed tomorrow, had to liquidate, it does not have enough assets to liquidate. It would need support from general fund in order to continue moving forward. So I have discussed with city manager to come up with a game plan going forward to split out the fund balance, to set aside funds related to that future pension liability to cover its costs. This fund has been negative back to 2015 as that pension liability entry has made every single fiscal year unclosed. And we do want to come up with a game plan so it's not continuing to run negative, so to speak, going forward.
Thanks. Yeah, and I guess like on 771, the central garage, like, how does it make revenue?
Yes, so it is charging out expenditures citywide to any department that has vehicles or heavy machinery. And it's basically costing out the replacement costs of various vehicles, the employees that work at Central Garage, the cost of fuel services. That all is being billed back, so to speak, across other funds. So any expenses it incurs, because it does not generate fee revenue, it is then requesting to other funds on a quarterly basis, here's what our expenses were. And as part of budget, we allocate out what we expect those expenses to be.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So the hope is that it will continue to grow because you're building replacement dollars for the vehicles.
Okay, I got you.
But it is something you'll probably hear us talk about at budget because we've never been funding, we have not funded that replacement at 100% for several years.
The successor agency debt service, could you remind me what that is?
Yes, so as far as a successor agency, I'm not well-versed on that, so I might defer to city manager, community development director, lawyer. But we do have debt on the books that we are receiving, I believe, what is called recognized obligation payments. And we are paying that debt service, I believe, at a, there's a schedule set for what those payments look like over a certain period of time related to our successor agency and redevelopment agency. But if you want more detail, Director.
This isn't what we just talked about, is it? Okay, never mind. Fund 101 on page 71.
Well, isn't it correlating to what the bolded is below it, right? So that's the general fund, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. The STIP project fund on page, or it's Fund 211?
210, Fund 210. It is, I'm just going to read.
Oh, I got you. This is above it, okay.
Yeah, so it is just grant funds from our state transportation improvement program, and it's related to street-related projects.
All right, I'm almost done. Other question, it's Fund 101, I guess the general fund. It's a finance statement line item, other revenue. And it says operating transfers, $507,000.
Yes, I don't know what page you're referring to, but that is.
This is something that you guys sent me in an attachment.
Okay, so that 507,000 is related to the operating transfers between general fund to Streets Fund 207 for that maintenance of effort requirement for that 1.2 million that we discussed that was set aside. So that 507,000, how it makes it from general fund to the Streets Fund to support projects is through the conduit of operating transfer.
And then what are the investment earnings? How do we, what investments do we have?
Yes, so we have investments held through LEAF, which I don't have the acronym in front of me right now. I believe it's funds that are pooled at the state. And then we also have other investment holdings through US Bank. And we have a third-party Chandler Asset Management that manages that investment portfolio according to our investment policy. So we receive statements on a monthly basis and review for the US Bank trust assets, what the returns are or potential losses are from time to time. And then for the LEAF accounts, that interest is applied on a quarterly basis, and we review those statements on a quarterly basis for the city.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
so you can get your.
Sure. Thanks.
All right, we've got at least one public comment. If there's any other public comment on Zoom, raise your hand now. If not, we will start with Kirk. Go ahead, Kurt.
Council members, thanks for taking my call.
Go ahead, Kurt.
I'm here. Are we, can you hear me? Check, check? Anything?
Kurt, can you go ahead and start again, please? We got you now.
I'm trying.
Nope, you're perfect. Yep, it was on our end. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So I'm listening with rapt attention on the council budget, excuse me, the city budget, but I hear nothing about deferred maintenance, which is not surprising, but I think that it's an important idea to consider at this point because we have the Gateway Project and we have a lot of issues that are synergistically occurring at this moment, namely, a strong demand for real estate, a polytechnic situation, transportation crisis. All of these things maybe are important right now, and we need to think about deferred maintenance, in my opinion, namely, $64 million for the marsh upgrade and at least $100 million in sewer pipes that are 60 years old, that are still sitting in place, that are falling apart. And the reason that's important to fix our sewer pipes, because that causes INI, which is infusion and inflow, and that's what overwhelms our marsh. And that's what causes untreated or partially treated sewage to get dumped in the bay. So I know that these numbers seem comical, and that's probably outrageous to hear $100 million for sewer pipes, which is times and times our city budget on an annual basis. But I'm sorry, these are serious problems. They need to be attacked. And so I just want to point out that we've got a big problem, and I want it addressed if possible. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for taking the time to make the public comment.
All right, we have no more public comment on Zoom.
Do we have any public comment on the budget in the room?
Hi, I just want to say if you had a tip jar there, you'd get a big one from me. But I do have a question sort of related to this deferred maintenance. And we talk about reserve in the general fund, and of course, I talk about emergency and stuff. What kind of monies or resources are available if the big one hits? You know, if something urgent and immediate comes up, what other kinds of monies exist with the city? Or do they?
We talk mostly, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, please, go ahead. We talk mostly about the general fund reserve, and we do set aside a goal of 25%. We're working to exceed that at around 33% this year, which would be emergency funds. But each of our other funds, whether it's water, sewer, streets, also carry reserve balances. Those are geared towards replacement or proposed projects. But it could potentially be cash on hand if the city needed it in a substantial emergency, you know? But we are in the big one, you know? We are certainly going to be looking to our state and federal partners to be coming in and helping us make some of those changes. But we'll continue to set money aside and our insurance companies.
Thank you, Joanne.
Yeah, I think I'm good. Really appreciate everything. You're amazing, Andrea. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 212-54, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, accepting the mid-year budget review and approving associated budget revisions for fiscal year 2021, '22.
I'll second.
Actually, I have some more comments that, we'll just take a moment. You know, just talking about the economy in general and how we forecast everything. You know, I guess right now, a lot of people are talking about getting rid of the gas tax for a while to help people at the pump. You know, I just think that's something we might want to keep in mind, you know, as we make our projections. I know the Fed's been raising rates. I think they just raised it, and it's projected they're going to raise it maybe seven more times this year, which affects, I think, everybody in the economy. They, you know, in the end, all the interest rates go up, and some are considered to borrow money. They have less money in their pocket to buy things that generate retail sales tax. You know, I think a lot of us heard inflation's up. You know, everything's more expensive. I think groceries are like 8% more expensive across the board. Other things like cars are like 30% more expensive. Houses are more expensive. So it just leaves, you know, the, it leaves everybody with, yeah, less money in their pockets to be spending. And also, the cost of gas is up, right? Like, I think we've all noticed that. The gas is really expensive right now. So, yeah, I think the budget's really well-done. I, you know, think that we're always pretty conservative and manage the money pretty well. But, you know, I think as we talk about the budget for the next fiscal year, we should keep some of those things in mind and maybe consider increasing our reserves a little bit. That's it, thanks.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So this next time, we're back to oral and written communications. It's provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star.
Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar, or press star nine now if you are on the phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. When it is your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. So we'll go to our online folks first.
I'm seeing no online public or last oral communication, so one last chance, nobody's raising their hand, okay.
Okay. I really do appreciate your tolerance of my coming up here to the podium on a regular basis, but I do, like I said last time, consider myself an essential citizen and appreciate your recognizing that. I picked up the latest issue of the North Coast Journal, and it just sort of reminded me of some thoughts, philosophical things that I've been concerned about just in our community. I've been here 10 years, living in Humboldt County, and have endured some really great things and some not-so-great things. I was assaulted at my first Oyster Fest just last week, I guess was the anniversary of my witnessing a man being stabbed right across the street from City Hall. And as some of you may know, I received some severe dog bites recently too, that I'm physically recovering from, but just now starting to emotionally deal with. So, and recognizing we have some issues in this community in regards to dogs and the people who own them, along with all the other issues that we have. But I guess, you know, I always back up to the philosophical, so when I looked at the cover and it's talking about cannabis, I thought about the THC, and I have three Ts, three Hs, and three Cs I'd like to end my tonight's presentation with here at the podium. And the three Ts are trust, truth, and transparency. The Hs are humility, honesty, and humane-ness, and the Cs are caring, compassion, and connectedness. And I really, really want to see our community move forward with all these THC's helping us through into the future. And I just, I thank you again for letting me be, letting me serve you as an essential citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, I think we second your motion, Joanne.
Joanne, will you post your THC's on Facebook later or something so I can remember what they are? Okay, I liked them.
Okay, so next we have council and staff reports. Anybody from staff have any reports? Okay, how about council?
Just want to say, Purim started at sundown, so happy Purim to all my Jews.
I had the opportunity to reconnect with the Sister City Committee, which was really wonderful, they are a great group, and they are really hoping and planning on having an I block party again this year, and have begun the early planning process of that. They did share some interesting information about political problems in Nicaragua right now that make it difficult to send any funds there, but they're still hoping to raise funds and, you know, keep those in reserve so when, you know, the opportunity arises and the political situation changes a bit in Nicaragua, that they might be able to send those funds and continue a lot of the great projects that they've been doing. So just a little update from them.
Thank you, and today, actually earlier, I met with our Homelessness Services Working Group, and I just wanted to bring up a couple points. One, we talked about a bit earlier, but just in case anybody missed it, both of the Home Key applications, the one by Arcata Partners, House Partnership, and Danko, have moved forward to the next step, and they're hopeful that they're in good positioning, so that's great news. One interesting thing, as I know we've talked about before, that there, we have a lot of housing vouchers, hundreds, I believe, that are unused because of no physical space to use them in, and it's not a for-sure thing, but there's a possibility that some of those might be able to be used for those projects. That typically doesn't happen that way, but I guess there's some changes and considerations being made, so we're, you know, I think it was Arcata House Partnership is working on that conversation to see if that can happen. And then for safe parking, it's exciting, it's getting close, so their, Arcata House Partnership is starting to work on the site prep, putting in security systems, staff training, and also working with the people that are parked out front, kind of either trying to get them onboard to come in, or just noticing them that it will be time, there will be a time that comes in the near future where they'll have to find a different space. So those are just my updates from that group today. Oh, and then the Main Street Membership Gala will be held at the Arcade Theatre Lounge, I believe it is next Friday, so that will be a fun event, so there's still tickets for sale if people are interested.
Oops, sorry. No, I just want to say, along the lines of our safe parking, I saw that the county is now thinking about kind of taking our lead and doing the safe parking encampment too, so I just want to congratulate us for being kind of the trailblazers.
I wanted to add one thing that I forgot about, that's kind of, I guess, a personal, yet professional announcement. No, because you said March 25th, so if you're planning on going to Ball, maybe before, myself and actually former Mayor Sofia Pereira are going to be participating in a panel at HSU, that's part of the Schwab Lectures Series for Political Science, starts at 4:30? Four, it starts at four, and it's in Siemens Hall on March 25th, and so Sofia and I will be talking about women in leadership and various, you know, things about Arcata and all of that, so should be a good time.
That's awesome, Sarah, will you post about that? So that reminds me, thank you.
Okay, so we do have, for dates of future meetings, we have a study session with the committee chairs on Tuesday, March 29th at 6:00 PM, and it'll be here in the council chambers. Will that be just in person, or will it also be hybrid?
So the plan is, we are predominantly going to be in person, we're encouraging people to come in person. What we are going to do, because we usually sort of sit in a circle, so we're not going to be able to kind of go in on each person with cameras, we will have this camera in the back which will take in the whole picture, and we are going to use what we call a Polycom telephone with some extensions to try to catch the audio. So we are going to attempt to go out on Zoom, but I just am not going to guarantee the quality of that particular Zoom meeting, but we will try to capture it, and then we will record it, and we are, you know, we think we have a good plan, but it's not going to be quite as good as we do here at these meetings in that format.
Okay, so if you have a really good interest in that, you might want to show up in person so you can get the full effect of the meeting. And with that, I believe we are adjourned, so have a wonderful evening, everyone.